Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, September 12th, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone from the public or committee liaisons that would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none. We will now receive comments from the public, both oral and written regarding a zone classification change request for 157.2 acre tract of land located along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard between West Ranch and Friendswood Lakes subdivisions, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from single-family residential and planned unit development 2019-11 to a revised planned unit development for residential development Avalon at Friendswood consisting of the following tracts. 96.944 acres in the Mary Fabro survey abstract number 69 being all of a 97 acre tract of land described in a deed to Cypress Creek Holdings Limited. 259.5277 acres of land, more or less, being a portion of a called 194.21 acre tract described as tract A as conveyed to Yellowstone Hill Country Ranching LLC. Aubrey, would you please provide the staff summary?
So this is an amendment, partial amendment to a previous PUD that we reviewed and voted on earlier this year.
Thank you. So, I'm gonna start over. We reviewed this, a PUD application for Avalon at Friendswood earlier this year. The owner since then has acquired additional land from one of the property owners, making it possible for them to build lots around both sides of the lake. So the portion within the Friendswood city limits is another 57 acres for this development. So, the new, the original application was 115 acres, 206 lots. The new application is 157 acres, 259 lots. They did away with the 80-foot lots, so there's 60, 70, and 90-foot lots. It's gonna be broken down into five phases, which were shown on the schematic development plan. It was Exhibit B in the back-up material. The applicant will still be required to coordinate with Galveston County for the construction of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. Friendswood Lakes Boulevard is gonna basically require substantial completion. They're gonna have to meet their access requirements per the subdivision ordinance and the fire code before we'll record plaits and allow building. And I believe the applicant is here tonight for additional information.
Do you think it makes sense to go, have the applicant go now or go during the action items?
I would let him go now. That way they get their, present their information and answer any questions for the public.
Okay, fair. So is the applicant here? Make any comments?
Can you put up the...
Yes.
Can you pull up my computer, Jeff?
Good evening, Catherine Parker with Metaplaning and Design. So as you recall, we were here a few months ago for this PUD. And as Aubrey mentioned, the primary change is that we've been able to acquire additional land. Do you have the... Or, I can just tell you.
I can, yeah.
Okay, you can go to the next one. All right, so this is the plan that you saw before you previously. And we, at that point, were only planning on developing on the east side of the lake. And if you go to the next slide, this is the new subject property. So for the portion of the tract that's within the city of Friendswood, we now have control of both sides of the lake. It would also include the remainder of it south, but that's in Lake City. So for this PUD, we're only gonna be addressing the portion that you'll see here. There's another portion of the tract where the bottom of the lake is, but that's in the city of Lake City. And so that's not a part of this PUD, but that is gonna be contiguous with this development. So if you go to the next slide, this is the new plan. So for the most part, the portion north of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard has not changed. With the exception of the lots around the lake, we've changed them. They were previously 80-foot lots, and we've changed them all to 90-foot lots. So that's one of the changes. This plan previously were only about 7% 90s. And in acquiring the additional land, we were able to make some other modifications. Now, all lake lots are 90-foot lots, so we're now at 23% 90-foot lots in this development. Also, by now having control of both sides of the lake, we're given an opportunity to have wider windows to the lake, which had been one of the concerns in the past. And so, as you can see, coming in off of Friendswood Lakes, going south, there's a significant open space there for views and access to the lake. And then also, a little area by the pink lots, the 60-foot lots, that has park areas. So really trying to open up those views and access and be able to address some of the previous concerns and also significantly increasing that percentage of the 90-foot lots. If you can go to the next slide. And so here, we're just highlighting some of those open space areas. But for the most part, the main intent of the development has stayed the same. We've just tried to, in acquiring the additional land, be able to accommodate some of the items that we heard previously and be able to still offer the same product that was discussed before. And I can go through all of the regulations and everything if you'd like us to, but we didn't make any adjustments to that. Really, the only change was that we changed this concept plan to show the revised plan based on the new acreage that we were able to acquire. So if you'd like, I can go over the rest of that again. But really, we've tried to keep it as minimal modification as possible. It's primarily just because we were able to get more land and wanted to be able to make this development a little bit more cohesive around the whole lake and address some of those concerns. So, available if you have any questions or if you would like me to go into any more detail, I do have it. But just kinda wanted to give you a brief overview of what the intent was with this.
So I have one question.
Yes.
I love what you did. I could tell right away that you had listened to our feedback, so I think it's a lovely layout and a lovely subdivision. The one question that I have is, I read something about walking trails or walking spaces throughout. Can you just kinda point out to me? I couldn't determine where they were on...
So the intent is still for all of the lake lots to go straight to the lake. So any trails or walking area would be on the open spaces adjacent to it where there aren't lots. So, like at the entrance of the development, south of Friendswood Lakes...
Where you see the green?
Correct, yeah.
So not exactly a trail, but just green space?
Right, because the whole, the whole product is, the idea is to have, you know, this unobstructed view to the lake. So there's still not gonna be trails around the perimeter of the lake as a whole, but there are, partially because we now have control of both sides of the lake, there are, is an opportunity for more windows to it, but also just a larger area at the top of it to provide more open space and access for residents.
So what was making me ask that question? I see the little pocket parks or top parks, and I was wondering if there is a way to walk to those or get to those without, like your kid going along the street or something like that?
Well, there's still gonna be sidewalks on either side of the street.
Okay.
But as far as around the entire perimeter of the lake, no, that would not, not be possible with the way that the lot lines are gonna go down.
Okay, thanks.
I think we'll also have opportunity for questions when we take this up as an action item.
All right.
So please stick around for a little while.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making this change? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this change? Okay, seeing none. Next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner or citizen so requests, in which case the item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission August 22nd, 2019, regular meeting? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Next on our agenda are the action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules and Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item is consideration and possible action regarding a zone change classification request for 157.2 acre tract of land located along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard between West Ranch and Friendswood Lakes subdivisions, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from single-family residential and planned unit development 2019-11 to a revised planned unit development for residential development Avalon at Friendswood consisting of the following tracts. A 96.944 acres in the Mary Fabro survey abstract number 69 being all of a 97 acre tract of land described in a deed to Cypress Creek Holdings Limited. And 59.5277 acres of land, more or less, being a portion of a called 194.21 acre tract described as tract A as conveyed to Yellowstone Hill Country Ranching LLC. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Aubrey, I assume you don't, but is there any additional information?
No, sir.
Okay. And the applicant already provided their presentation. I guess we'll move directly to discussion. Lisa, starting with you.
Just reiterate, it, I appreciate the attention that you gave to our earlier comments and the difference in this plat. I find it a really beautiful subdivision, and I have no hesitations with it.
Mark?
Yeah, I'll echo that. And I did, I did want to ask one question. I'm sorry to call you back up.
I had a question too.
Okay.
That's fine here.
I'm not the only bad guy there. So, when you talk about, so this is, you're not taking away any amenities. This is still a gated community from what I understand.
Correct, yes.
When we look at the diagrams you gave us, can you share on the League City side of the city line, is there access coming into the neighborhood from that location? Or will all access to the gated community come from the Friendswood side of the house?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. There is a existing stub street down there, and if there is access, it would still be gated. But the main access will be to the north because really, the rest of the site is just going around the lake. So it's basically a loop street around the whole lake. There's not a significant portion of it that's gonna be within Lake City.
Okay, thank you for that. One other question. I supported this the first time around. It doesn't change my support now, and I think it's even improved. When we talk about drainage across city lines, how complex is that for a developer? And the reason I'm asking is because, not that it changes my vote, I'm just curious about the complexity of the process going forward when we're talking about drainage. And I don't have to tell you, it's a hot topic around here these days. Do you have any insight that you can share, or anyone else that might have developer experience?
So obviously, there will have to be coordination and approvals by both entities. As far as the details of how it all will go, that's, conversations have been initiated, but a lot of that will be, the details will be dove into a little bit more once the zoning is approved. It does add a little bit of complexity because of the city limit line, but the majority of the tract is in the city of Friendswood, so it will meet all of their requirements. It's just gonna be a matter of coordinating, especially for utilities and such on the portion that's in Lake City. But that's gonna be a longer conversation that is gonna definitely take coordination with all the different entities.
So you mentioned the utilities. Any of the other infrastructure, water, sewer, is that, is that split across the city lines? Or is that all coming from the Friendswood side of the house as well?
Well, that's part of what it's gonna be coordinated.
Forward work, okay. That's fine, thank you.
I just had a quick question. At the top of the larger lake, you added a lot more green space. That's excellent. Is that green space available to both sections of the neighborhood, either side of Parkway?
Yes.
So even though it's gated, everyone in that neighborhood can use that green space?
Right. And I did have on that exhibit, the acreage called out, let me see if, it was, I believe it's over an acre. Yeah, it's about 1.2 acres.
Of the green space?
Of green space, at that point specifically.
Okay. Well, I supported this last time. I'm gonna support it again because this is a better design. I mean, you've gone from 115 acres to 157 acres, about 43 more acres, about 37% increase. But your homes are only increasing by 25%, so that means your density's dropping. So the first plan, you had 1.8 homes per acre, now you got 1.6 homes per acre. So that's a good thing. So I'm in support of this.
And we're at about 26% open space total for the project still.
Yes. Another good point, you went from 7% 90-foot lots to 23% 90-foot lots.
Yes.
It's a better plan.
Thank you. I don't have that plan in front of me. It's maybe 20? I mean, it's a very small portion of it. Because it's a very tight area. So there's basically one street.
10%, 20%?
Probably 10%.
21?
Yeah.
I don't have anything else. Thank you. Dick?
A couple clarifications, please. On the League City side, would the, we've already talked about the utilities and stuff, but would the look and feel of the homes and the properties be the same as what we're seeing?
Yes, it'll be the same product that's sold throughout the rest of the development. And they want it to be one comprehensive, you know, cohesive development. So it'll be the same products, same home types, same basic design as far as the lake lots go and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, thanks. I noticed on this drawing, and I, maybe I missed it when we talked over this a couple months ago, but it appears that there's, I'm not sure if you'd call that easement or what exactly the nature of the property is right down there at the lake. There's some dashed lines and stuff. Do you, can you describe what that is?
Around the perimeter of the lake? Yeah, so that has to do with the easements and the high bank and such, because the lot lines go down to, basically to the water. There would still be an easement around the perimeter of it for maintenance, and that's part of what's written in here. So that's just illustrating that there is still...
But that's not public property.
Correct.
It is personal, okay.
It'll all be privately maintained and every HOA.
Yeah, I'm sort of comparing it to West Ranch or something.
Right.
They have the fence line down there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then lastly, you did compare the 90-foot lots from 7% to 23% under the new plan. Could you share the same kind of statistics on the rest of the property sizes?
On the, the other lot sizes?
Yeah, the 60, 70.
So, the 60-foot lots went from 22 to 25, so fairly minor change. And then the 70-foot lots went from 57% to 52%. So previously, we had the four different products, 60, 70, 80, and 90. For the most part, the change was that all the 80s were changed to 90s.
Okay.
And then there was a decrease in the number of 70s.
And the last question, so the, this designation SF 1 through 5, those are the phases? Is that...
That's correct, yes.
Okay. All right, well, great. I appreciate y'all listening to us and making some significant enhancements to your first plan, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I had concerns last time you came before us, and I have to say, I still have concerns, some of my same concerns. When I look at the Friendswood ordinances on zoning and I look at the purposes of planned unit development zoning, I really don't feel like you, there's seven purposes, and I think you only meet six of them. So I'm, I'm still concerned that this, that you could do better and you could do more. At the end of the day, you know, I appreciate the fact that you've raised the number of 90-foot lots, but it's still 77% of your lots are below 90 feet. I do, I do see the changes, and I think you're definitely headed in the right direction. And I definitely think you, Taylor Morrison builds nice homes and nice subdivisions. I don't want to say differently. But in reading your planned unit development, in the section on the character of community, it says Avalon at Friendswood will be a gated residential neighborhood with both residential and recreational characteristics. Explain the recreational characteristics to me, if you would, please.
So that's where you'd have the opportunity for the access to the lake, the views of it, and in the parks there throughout, there's the one on the north side adjacent to the lake, and then again on the south side. It is a small development, so there's obviously gonna be fewer parks. But those areas are gonna have, you know, amenities, benches, landscaping, that type of thing that are, and gathering spaces if the kids wanna be able to go out there and play soccer or something like that. There is opportunities for community gathering recreational areas.
So as part of your amenities in those areas, you're looking at benches?
Right.
What else?
I mean, benches, there will be obviously sidewalks, landscaping. They're too small to have any, like, pool or anything like that. But it is giving opportunity for view of the lake and also just gathering spaces for the residents.
Right. And you did increase your views to the lake, and I appreciate that. But when I look at your amenities and per your numbers, you're at 41.2 acres of amenities. If you take the lake out, and to be honest, I mostly take the lake out because since the homes go all the way down to the lake and there's only limited views from anybody else to have of the lake, you know, then your amenities go from 26% that you stated earlier down to 9%. So to me, that's a little concerning because most of the views are for the people that are gonna own the big lots on the lake. One other, and maybe my last question, is there is an opportunity in your planned unit development document to increase the numbers of lots by 10%? And I just wanted to understand, you know, what, what does that mean? So for example, you've got, what I think, 60, you have 66 60-foot lots, right? So I'm taking that to mean it'll go, could be as low as 60 or could be as high as 72. That's how, am I reading that right? Okay.
Yes.
And you have no 80-foot lots at this point, so there's not gonna be any 80-foot lots?
If we were to do 80-foot lots, it would require us to update the plan. But it does at least give us the allowance that that is a possibility. At this point, it would probably only happen if we were increasing, say, the 70-foot lots to a larger lot size.
Okay. So I wanted to make sure I understood what you said about the 80-foot lots, because right now, there's zero. You went to zero on this. So 10% of zero is still zero.
Yes.
So you would not have 80-foot lots, per se. You would have a 70-foot lot that could change, that could change. You could add more or less of those.
Right.
I mean, obviously, I'm all in favor of bigger lots, so. But I just wanted, because when you're, with your 10%, you know, you can, you could end up with, instead of, you know, 59, which is a great number, much better than the first time, on 90-foot lots, you could end up as little as 53, right? So, okay, I'm still concerned, but it looks like you've got a strong support going for you at this point. But, and I say again, I think it's gonna be a nice subdivision. I'm just concerned that it really doesn't meet some of the standards that have been set in Friendswood for planned unit developments and Friendswood's ordinance requirement for 90-foot lots. I just don't think it meets that test for us, for me. So that's, any other questions or comments? By anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed?
Thank you for your time.
5 to 1.
5 to 2.
2.
4 to 2.
Oh!
4 to 2.
I missed it.
Yeah.
Mark that down, give me just one second. Okay, next is consideration and possible action regarding a site plan amendment for HEB curbside expansion at 701 West Parkwood Avenue. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aubrey?
Yes, sir. HEB is proposing an addition of 1,188 square feet to the curbside service portion of the building that they recently added. No parking spaces are being removed, and the site still meets other zoning-related requirements. The exterior addition will match the existing building. No changes in the landscaping or outdoor lighting, so we didn't do, require them to do a landscape or photometric plan since they weren't affecting those elements.
Okay, is by chance the applicant here for HEB?
Yes.
Do you have any comments? Please step forward. If you could, state your name, please.
My name's Scott Broadbent. I'm the architect of record for the project, just here to assist in any way I can, answer any questions that you might have. It's a pretty simple little addition. Actually, so right now, the curbside area is served by just cooler refrigerated cases. And the way the program's kinda morphed within HEB, they're now serving those areas with, like, refrigerated cooler boxes and freezers. So this is expanding, so we can put a new cooler and freezer box in there. So primarily, that entire space is really just refrigerated box space on the inside.
Red?
I have no comment. The previous addition was around 400...
I wasn't the architect of record for that one, but I think it was somewhere around there.
No questions.
Mark?
No, thank you.
I had no questions as well, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous? Excuse me. Next is consideration and possible action regarding site plan approval for Valvoline Instant Oil Change to be located at 1701 South Friendswood Drive. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Staff summary?
Yes, Valvoline Instant Oil Change is proposing a new location to be located at 1701 South Friendswood Drive. So this is behind Jack in the Box. It's fronting 518 next door to Chipotle. So between Jack in the Box and the Chipotle that's currently under construction. The new building is 2,108 square feet. It's a single-story building. The drive-through bays are for servicing the vehicles. The bays do not front 518. They're on the sides of the building. All the building materials and colors were subject to the community overlay district requirements, and they all meet that. The only remaining comment on the compliance memo, there's an access easement that goes across the front of the property that comes all the way down from Vergata Commons across Chick-fil-A, CareNow. It's a 24-foot access easement, and I think their drawings were just off, but their parking spaces showed to be going into that access easement a little bit. They still had a 24-foot driveway, so they are still working on just lining that, those driveway and the parking spaces up, but that was the only thing remaining.
This is the, is this the Starbucks parking lot area that you...
No, no, there's a, they have a 24-foot access across the front of their property, so it'd be on the 518 side. In front, it goes in front of Chipotle and in front of this business.
Is the applicant here? Anybody representing the applicant here? Oh, great. If you could state your name, please.
Richard Gagos.
Any comments that you, that you have for us ahead of our questions?
Sure. Just real briefly about the company. Of course, we've been around for over 100 years producing oil for vehicles and machines. We, we pride ourselves in an instant oil change, or I like to call it a drive-through compared to others, where you get out of the vehicle and sit in a waiting room with Valvoline. You stay in your car the whole time. You stay in your car the whole time while the work's being done. There's screens that you can watch. And customers in and out in fifteen, twenty minutes. So it's quick. We don't produce a whole lot of vehicles. We're about a vehicle every fifteen minutes, four cars an hour. We average about forty-five cars a day, so traffic isn't really an issue. We recycle all of our products, from oil, oil filters, all of our products, they're all recycled. Spillage is slim to none, because everything's pumped in and pumped out. And in the case of a spillage, we have our, our foundation is coated with a water-resistant coating, so if something was to spill, it more than likely wouldn't spill out into the soil and it would stay inside the building. So that's just a quick overview of.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Well, hang on a second, there may be some questions. Eric?
So it's company-owned then, it's going to be owned by?
Yes, this is, this is corporate-owned.
We were talking about the environmental issues. I was curious, in the business you're in, is there anything else unique about the requirements for sewers or anything for a building like this? Or you just tie right into the city system?
We, we tie in, we have a oil-water separator that we set inside the basement, so if there's any oils, that picks up the oil, but we tie in to the city sewers.
Is that a requirement, is city requirement or requirement of your company?
It's both, both.
Dick?
The traffic plan, people would be northwest bound on five eighteen and turn into that and then drive around the back of the building and into the southeast side, is that?
Yes, yes.
Is that the plan?
So the, we, the customer would come, yes, that is north, through the north driveway, make a right turn, come out and make a left.
Okay. And Aubrey, that's a two-directional road there, that segment?
Yes, that's an access easement that goes behind Jack in the Box?
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Oh, it's where the existing one is, but maybe redesign some, but, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
So they come in on the Jack in the Box side and go out, go through?
Jack in the Box is further to the west.
Yeah.
They would come in on that drive, shown just within the property lines.
Yeah, so basically, that access easement be widened. I think there's, it's an additional fifteen feet on y'all's property?
I, yes, yes.
Yeah.
It's already there, it's just going to be widened?
widened, yes.
That's good.
I'm still not seeing it.
So the dash line is their property line?
Okay, so what I'm not seeing is where the cars go in and where they go out.
Is there an easy way to put it on the screen or?
Yeah. Can you pull up my computer, Jeff?
You may have to.
Okay. So the north drive is where the customer would enter the site.
Up by the dumpster?
Yes, that drive would, they would, they would enter the site. It's a one-way drive, make that turn and come in into the back of our building, into the bay area. After the service is over.
Good job.
Complete.
Thank you so much.
So the, the customer would enter the drive here, make their way up, make a turn.
Off of what road, just to be clear?
The, yes.
Five eighteen, yeah.
Drive through the access road, make a right turn to our property, turn and come into the building, have their service done, and they would exit back out this way onto five eighteen.
So where's Jack, where's Jack in the Box?
Right over here.
Okay, so you got to go through the lot, Jack in the Box, or Starbucks, or whatever to get to?
Yeah, the shared access.
No.
You can come off Friendswood Drive.
I'll come off five eighteen.
The drive, the shared access is all right here.
It goes all the way to five eighteen? Okay.
I have a question. Is it my turn yet?
Go ahead, you start, yes, go ahead, please. Please.
Okay, so the one question that I have, and I'm being the Lorax here, there is one tree on that whole lot, and it is a pretty tree.
Existing.
And you are, one tree existing, and you are taking it out.
Yes.
Do you have to take it out because of?
We do. The, the tree, I believe, is somewhere right here, about where our drive is.
So when you're shifting things by fifteen feet, does that make it where you can keep that tree?
We, we can't shift the building any further south.
I thought, did you not say that you are right now in the easement and you have to shift?
They're widening that road.
The cross-access right here is already installed, and there was some changes that we had to do on the survey side for that cross, that cross-access.
Aubrey, did I misunderstand when you said that the easement, which I thought the access easement, which is the, the road behind Jack in the Box, was, you were going to expand that, widen it?
Yes, I think currently, it just goes to their property line, and this will make it an additional fifteen feet.
We're, it's, you can barely see the hatched area here, but we're, yeah, redeveloping that portion. But we are, I'm not sure if you guys have seen our landscape plan, but.
We have it up.
We have plenty of trees throughout.
You do? There are three-inch trees, and you're taking out a twenty-two-inch sweet gum, which is a very nice tree. So what are you putting in instead?
Oh, you had to ask that, didn't you? I can't tell you off the top of my head, I don't think I have the landscape plan with me.
I know there were some crepe myrtles when I looked at it, I remember those, but I don't remember the rest.
The trees going in are going to be red buds, crepe myrtles, Mexican plums, two different types of oaks, an elm and cypress.
Anything else at this time?
No. If it turns out that you can save that tree, save it.
Okay, we can really look at that.
All right, you're losing one tree, but you're adding twenty-five, so that's a pretty good trade-off for me. I have no comments. I think it's a, for an oil-change place, it's a nice-looking building, I got to say. So my only concern is that driveway behind Jack in the Box, I mean, it's a mess right now, and I mean, it's, you're going to have some challenge handling the traffic there, so best of luck to you on that. I have no comments.
Lou, say anything else?
It is a pretty building, I mean, when you look at.
It is possible to access.
Stone and brick that went into that.
We take pride in the designs of our building. This building here, you know, matched the materials by the landlord, but if you drive around Houston, any other Valvoline, they're a little bit different, just depending on the development, but we, we keep our buildings nicely.
You do have some in service already, that, the same, similar, same or similar design, right?
Yes.
When you Google it, that, that, it shows up.
Yes.
Lou, say anything else? Mark? Mark?
Yeah, it's just that big red and blue sign. So I know that there's additional steps to go through there. Clarify for me, in your elevation drawings, you have signs on two sides of the building? Which side is, so I'm looking, let me see, I'll tell you what, your color rendering, which, which side is facing five eighteen? Obviously, the skinny side, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you're going to have a sign facing five eighteen?
The side facing five eighteen is what we call the extended tower. I can show you.
On the renderings, it would be the left elevation.
Left elevation.
It would be, yes, the left, the left.
And then right around the corner from that, what you're calling the front of the elevation is not, that's the front of the building, not?
Yes, the front would be facing, I guess, the back of Jack in the Box.
Okay. So when, when we were talking about the sign ordinances?
Uh-huh.
Okay, it's, it's by linear feet of that side of the building?
Yes.
Regardless of if it's an elevated piece or not?
Yeah, it's just linear footage.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's the side of the building with your primary entrance is the side we use for your linear footage.
Right, they're, they're just putting, they're putting two of.
Oh, they only get to count one, one side of the building. So you get, it's one and a half square feet of sign area per linear foot of building frontage, and that gives you your total sign area that's allowed. You can break that up, and you can do one sign, or you can do the three signs, but you're still limited to the hundred and fifty, or whatever sign area calculation.
It would be elevation three, the front elevation, is what you would use to calculate?
Yes.
Their total sign square footage allowance.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dick, did you have anything?
Okay.
I had a, oh, yeah, oh, sorry. No, no, please.
So I was just curious, so the retention pond, you're part of that group that's going to maintain that, is that right? The retention pond?
The overall, in.
Yeah, in the back there.
We, I'm not exactly sure, I have to get back with the landlord on that.
Are they? I mean, that's the way I understand.
They're part, they are part of the, it's basically like a property owners association, so they're probably, I would imagine, just pay of an annual fee or something to the association, and Vergata Commons is going to be, going to be the ones responsible for the actual maintenance.
So, I mean, you're aware of that, right? That there's?
Yeah, 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 I'm sure, yeah.
And this, and you can reel me in on this one, but we were down, a couple of stores are starting to open down there. We were down there over the weekend, and traffic's pretty significant. So has there been a study, and I guess more things are coming, right? So as more things come, more people come, more cars come, has there been a study, and at some point, does that say, hey, we can't put any more in there?
I mean, as long as they, I mean, I think they've, like I said, they've done that twenty-four access, twenty-four-foot access easement to have like a driveway, I mean, they have circulation all within the property, so there's a twenty-four-foot that goes across the front, and then when you go back behind Chick-fil-A, there's another driveway that is like another twenty-four-foot access. So they've got circulation within the property. The access easement between Starbucks is legally a dedicated access to this property, it's a private access easement. You know, and then they've got the outlets that go back behind Jack in the Box, so I mean, as long as they provide the parking and the circulation, I mean, they're going to fit as much as they can in on that property.
Throw it on five eighteen and five twenty-eight, that, I mean, it has no bearing on that at all. You can build anything you want back there, then?
Um.
Obviously, as long as it meets requirements.
Yes.
So there's no, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's it, thanks.
Okay, so most of my questions have been asked, but I did, so what's your experience based on your operating of these stores? I'm just worried that because of just what they're talking about, the cars and the accessway, is it typically your experience that the cars will be on your property that are waiting to go into the facility? Since everybody's waiting in their car?
Yes.
What I'm concerned about is that cars would, you know, there's ten cars in line. What's your normal, you know, expectation of how many cars will be waiting to get in, to pull into the bay?
Two or three car stack. Most of the time, if a customer is driving by and they see two cars in line, they drive by and come back later.
Okay. Okay, they're just back, I was trying to make sure that we weren't sticking cars out into the already congested area.
No, and, and the car stack, which would be the, I guess it'd be the east side of the building, that's where the cars stack up, so there wouldn't be any coming onto the access.
That makes sense to me. So how many employees, I think maybe you call them technicians, maybe, but, but employees are you going to have there?
Max for the size of building, seven, seven employees.
Seven employees.
Two per bay and a manager.
Okay, where are they going to park?
The parking up front. We, we have eleven spaces, seven employees.
One of which is handicap, but, but, so will any of your customers actually park their car there for some reason?
Very rarely, very rarely do they.
All of your services are drive-in and drive-out?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I just seen, I knew there'd be some amount of employees and such limited parking, I was, I was concerned, but you're saying all the services, pretty much, they just drive in and drive out?
Right, right, and if, if there's like a state inspection, for example, the customer gets out of the car, they sit in the lobby, we do our inspection test, drive back into the bay, the customer comes out and takes their vehicle from there.
Okay. Okay, no, thank you. And back to, somebody asked about storing chemicals and that sort of, how much, what amounts of quantities of chemicals or oil and so forth that you're going to store on site?
I'm not sure exactly the amounts. We, we do, in the lower level, we have containers for all of our oils and fluids that are stored.
Is it like drums, or?
Yes, they're, they're, they're big, I'd say about four feet wide, six feet high.
Like totes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, and that'll be down in the basement, you called the basement level, is that what you said?
Yes, yes, and everything's pumped into those tanks and pumped out.
Let me, let me jump on there. Sure, yeah, please.
And those tanks are sealed?
Yes.
Right? And waterproof?
Yes.
So in the event of flooding, you're okay?
There.
And do those drain, that, does that area drain to the pond that we were talking about earlier?
It, it, wouldn't it, well, no, no, that, that wouldn't.
It just fills up? If safe water or something spills in there, it just stays in there?
It should, yes.
Okay. Okay, and how many of these do you have in the Houston area, or do you know?
In Houston, corporate stores, we probably have about a dozen, I would say. We do franchise out, I'm not sure how much we have.
Fourteen in the larger Houston area, according to Google.
Ah. We do have about five hundred and five corporate stores around the nation.
Not your first rodeo?
No.
Got it, okay, I just wanted to understand it more, how it works. Any other questions? Well, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aubrey, just as a, clarify, you had some staff comments on the summary?
Just, yeah, with the alignment of that parking and that.
Do we need to amend our motion to include that?
Yes.
So, Eric, if you could amend your motion to include staff comments?
I move that we amend the motion to include staff comments.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Looks to be unanimous.
Even with the tree.
I know that was hard for you.
I'm going to look at that when I go home, I've never noticed it.
One tree on the whole lot.
It's really a nice tree.
It must be.
It is, no, it is. Okay, our next agenda item is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission meeting dates. Aubrey?
Thursday, September twenty-sixth is our next regular meeting, and then in October, I sent out an email, Thursday, October tenth is our first regular meeting.
And then, in October, I sent out an email, and Thursday, October tenth is our first regular meeting for October. Um, we do have a zone change item that needs a public hearing that would have been for that date. Staff is gonna be in San Antonio, receiving our scenic city award. So, we need to, um, if we could get a motion and a vote to move that October tenth meeting to the seventeenth.
We still meet on the twenty-fourth, so we'll have back-to-back?
Yeah.
We couldn't combine them, maybe just do one meeting for October?
Uh, we could. But we don't wanna meet on Halloween. Think we could, we could, we could probably combine the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth. We don't really have a lot going through right now. Can we, can we play about here?
You proposing both of them on the seventeenth, or both on the twenty-fourth?
Whichever to work. Sounds like they need to meet earlier.
I'd report the twenty-fourth, but seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
We could do both on seventeenth, that'd be great.
Trying to think with notice requirements and everything for the... So, we could just do the twenty-fourth, if we wanna just keep that and just cancel the meeting on the tenth. I've gotta do newspaper notice on Monday, so that would be our one shot for that zone change. You're not gonna have, because we gotta get our recommendation to city council for that October, um-
Yeah, we only get, then one meeting for something, if we need to table it, or we can't.
Yeah, it would, the November fourth meeting for council, so that would just give us one.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to have both, the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth.
Two.
Well, if it starts looking, if it starts looking like there's an opportunity to combine them, that would be great, but we-
If it turns out we don't-
Or cancel one.
If it turns out we don't need the twenty-fourth, we can cancel it.
I was gonna say, anything you have on the twenty-fourth, go ahead and put it on the seventeenth agenda.
Did you get a response, I mean, you asked us to say whether or not you have one on the seventeenth?
Yes, we have a quorum for the seventeenth. And if we don't have items for the twenty-fourth, we don't have to have that meeting.
Yeah, but we need to, okay, so, good try, though.
Tried.
No, really good try. Okay, so, we need, we need a motion to delay the October ten, or move the October tenth meeting to the October seventeen.
Motion to delay.
Second it. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is communications. Do any commissioners have anything they wish to communicate? Any suggestions for future agenda items, general comments, or any updates from liaison assignments?
I do.
There you go.
Actually, I took notes. Am I stepping in front of anyone?
No, go for it.
All right, uh, so, Keep Friendswood Beautiful, um, they had quite a, quite a big meeting on the last one. Something that was a concern to me, and I don't know if, if there's anything we can do about it with planning and zoning. Um, so, the high school has quit recycling papers, because paper is no longer picked up. Reason that that is concerning, I mean, I, I think a lot of, um, I know, I used to, I used to drop off paper at the schools, and I believe that that is school-wide. It was just the high school recycling club that was reporting to us. But also, they are no longer picking up green recycling either, like yard clippings and, and leaves and things like that. So, um, is this Friendswood, do you know something about this?
Yeah, so, I, IFISD was contracted with a separate, like, waste company, and it was, I guess, really expensive for them. Um, we did, and it was, city staff meets with the school district once a month, and so, there was mention of them maybe getting with the city's contractor to maybe get those services going again, maybe at a better rate, I believe.
Those services and the green yard services?
Yeah, 'cause, like I said, it-
With both of those, like, one right after the others, one meeting and then the, the next.
I, I think it was a bit of a surprise that the school district was using a different company for recycling than the city normally provides. So, um, I can follow up on that.
Great, no, good point, thank you, what else?
September seventh was National Planting Day, hope everybody planted something.
I'll have to plant two next time.
The Labor Day event at the Perry Home, I think that is sponsored by Keep Friendswood Beautiful.
And FTAFA. And Downtown Association.
Yeah, oh, is it, both of them? So, uh-
And historical society, yeah.
I saw, um, via social media, that, that that was, went very, very well. I, on Labor Day, I happened to be, um, in the city where the Labor Day movement started. So, that was pretty interesting to do their tours of how Labor Day came into being. If you wanna talk to me about that later, I'm happy to do that. Uh, so, um, uh, the next event that's coming up is Santa in the Park. And then, there was a presentation about, um, it, it wa, how to make your trail systems, um, appeal more to young children, and what they did was kind of like a, almost a geocaching type search, but it was for different, um, it was called a fairy trail, and so, different artists would hide a fairy house or a fairy some places, and, and it was part of the thing. So, I thought that might be a neat thing to do on some of the walking trails that I've seen being planned around Friendswood. In, in particular, what made me think of it was the, the church area that we approved last time. Um, they have like a mile of, uh, trail, green space along that, uh, park. So, it, maybe something in conjunction with that when they start putting it into being. So, something to keep in mind when we start looking at the things that they're doing. Um, maybe we can partner with them through Keep Friendswood Beautiful to really make things nice. And let's see, um... October fifth in our, uh, garden, so that's coming up pretty quickly. In the pollinator garden, there's gonna be a monarch presentation, which'll tell you how to plant things in your own yard, that, uh, because Houston, Friendswood, is a pathway for the monarch butterfly and their migration pattern. So, it would be a good thing if every single person planted milkweed. Just putting that one in there. And then, the last thing, I, I really took notes this time. There is a scarlet, can it, can it, canapiti, canapete? In our pollinator garden, that was, that is a, a cutting, a direct descendant from Thomas Jefferson's garden. So, you'll have to look for that. That was it. I think I have the best assignment, just telling you.
Perfect. Mark?
Uh, you, you're gonna have to move me to yellow, I had some good notes too, but I left them at home. They're from the drainage district, I mean, they gave some metrics, they rent, went through their yearly statistics and metrics. There's just a ton of work that they're doing, I don't think they get enough credit from the public. I know people are griping about the number of dump trucks, but if you know what they're doing, um, it's, it's fantastic. I'll report on that next time.
Okay, good.
Well, and they, they, I have, I have noticed that they have, um, presentations in neighborhoods and different places where they explain what they're doing, and I did happen to go to one of those. And, and it really opens your eyes to how much work they are doing, and, and to the benefit with the, of the whole city with an eye on the most they can do for the least amount of money. So, it, they, you're right, they really are a spectacularly hard-working group.
I agree. Brett?
A few things, and just to tell what they said, I know, I know people complain about the dump trucks, but for every dump truck you see on the road, they're, they're hauling dirt, but they're really hauling off floodwater. So, look at it that way, visualize, every truck that's in the road is one truck of floodwater leaving our city. That's a good way to, to mitigate the concerns. Two things I'd like to maybe talk about, future agendas, uh, this goes back to the PUD process for the church last meeting. You know, I'd like to address it at some point, I think twenty-five percent wildego room was too much for them. Yeah, I think maybe that needs to go back to ten percent. And I think we need to put a time limit on PUDs. That was a four-year, that PUD was approved four years ago, and then, for them to come back. So, that's just something I'd like the commission maybe think about, to, uh, put a time limit on PUDs and to reduce that wildego room. Twenty-five percent's too much. The other thing, uh, I wanted to mention, I've noticed in the DRC report that a, uh, a gas station was looking at a prime intersection in downtown Friendswood. Fortunately, I think that went away, that caused me great concern, I know it's a specific use permit. I would like to maybe at some point, try again with council to get gas stations removed from downtown. Because I will go down swinging if a gas station comes in downtown Friendswood. Spend, uh, two decades trying to remove the four abandoned ones that sat there for years, so I do not want to allow another one back in. Uh, what else do I have? I think that's it, yeah, back to the Labor Day ice cream social, yeah, that was sponsored by Keep Friendswood Beautiful, Friendswood Downtown Association, Friendswood Historic Society. Uh, we served over eight hundred servings of Blue Bow Ice Cream. Proud to do that, that's it.
Only had, um, one question, Aubrey, is, make sure everybody who can attend the APA conference has signed up and-
Uh, I believe, I have you, um, Rich, and Lisa, um, I have hotel rooms booked, and yours is the last registration. Could not get logged on to the website, so, um, but she said, reset your password, so hopefully, I'll get that done tomorrow.
Are you gonna tell me what it is one day? I don't need to know.
Yes.
Kidding, okay. Okay. Next, Council Liaison. Ms. Hanks, thank you.
So, the ice cream social was really good, I think I heard a thousand people- Yeah, were served, and it, it was a great day, there were lots of new faces out there that I saw, too, I got to go. Also, October fourth is the Speakeasy, it's a library fundraiser, and it's in the spirit of the nineteen twenties, and so, your tickets can be purchased online, and it is the first time the library's had a big fundraiser like that, so mark your calendars for October fourth. I also wanted to let you know that city council will be having two special meetings the next couple of weeks, on the twenty-third and the thirtieth. There'll be public hearings about the budget, and specifically, the tax, uh, the taxes, but also budget. And, uh, those are both Monday evenings. The latest information I got today from Mo is that the staff is recommending a penny decrease to the tax rate. So, I doubt if we'll have many people out there complaining about that. Uh, the last thing is that I wanted to let you know about a vote that the city council tabled last meeting over the shopping center that, uh, has that request for a religious prayer. Uh, there was a motion to table it, and I supported that for two reasons. One, I was under the misunderstanding and, and asked Mary Kay to research this, which she did and gave us, gave us all clarification, that although the existing businesses that serve alcohol would be grandfathered in, I thought once they changed hands, if they did, so if Marino's wanted to sell to his brother-in-law or somebody else, that that person would be then under the new rule. And Mary Kay researched that, and that is not the, that is not the case, so that's okay. The other thing I, I feel a little guilty of, I mean, I will support it now, but, um, when I voted to change those two lots on spreading, on a Friendswood Link, the Harris's property, against the wishes of the homeowners that came and spoke against it, I did so because of the eighty-twenty. I've also been liaison on CDC the whole time I was superintendent, so, you know, sixteen-plus years. We've been trying to get to that eighty-twenty, and we're still not there. So, for at least twenty years, we've been trying to get to eighty-twenty. So, it just didn't make sense to me to take a retail shopping center and limit that ability for retail. So, that was just a personal thing, I mean, I'm, uh, but my main thing was that what could happen in the future to other businesses. But we also asked if we could hear from the owner, we didn't know if the owner was an out-of-town or out-of-state owner, if he realizes the implications of the law, so we did ask to, to hear from him. I don't know the motivation of the other three, because I wasn't expecting that motion to happen that night, but that's just to explain, 'cause I do respect everything that y'all do, and I respect how much you deliberate on things, but that's what was going through my head, so that's why I voted. Anything else on that, Mary Kay? That's it, okay, and that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Staff, Aubrey?
I just wanted, the Argus DRC report was in your backup material, um, and council action and ordinance updates. So, second readings were approved for the PUD amendment at one oh seven Shadwell, um, and adding the NAICS use eighty-one twenty-one personal care services to the four oh two East Edgewood, those were both approved. Um, and then, the twenty-four oh seven for the religious organizations was tabled. Um, I have requested that the agent get a letter or something in writing from the, uh, property owner, that they, you know, do understand the implications of that, and she's working on that, so.
Great.
And I'll-
Oh, sorry.
One more thing. I just wanted to remind everybody that the Avalon that we voted on for the recommendation tonight will be on council's agenda for public hearing and possible first reading on Monday, October seventh.
Mark, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to circle back to the eighty-twenty, and Brett, maybe you can remind me, when we were, uh, making trouble over at CDC, I thought we had talked about metrics at some point in time, where someone would be forecasting what that eighty-twenty projection would be? And I, I lost a beat on that, right? We've got two large developments coming in, residential developments, right? So, that's gonna change things, especially when you start to look at the, the changes in property values. I mean, who's, who's watching that, it doesn't have to be us, I'm just saying, who's looking, and how much of a horizon do we have on that? Okay. So, if that's still a CDC thing, that's, that's great, I can go talk to them.
Yeah, I, I mean, it would be something we could weigh in, uh, when we do the future land use map. We definitely, you know, take those things into consideration, um, and I can get, uh, we can work on getting some updated calculations.
Yeah, I think once a year, Cuttino will kick out a chart showing how much is residential and how much is commercial, and it's been fluctuating between eighty-six, eighty-seven percent residential. I think, I think this year dropped to eighty-five. But like I said, it's, it's probably gonna bump back up to eighty-six or eighty-seven with these big developments coming in.
Okay, just in case, it's a discriminator for us at some point. But I'll take the action, reach out to CDC if that's okay?
Sure.
If that's all right.
Becky?
No, sir.
Okay, Mary Kay, anything for us?
Oh, just wanted to point out that C has changed after the last week we asked for the update. Aubrey expanded the items to be discussed under item C, so you have more opportunities to ask about different things.
Okay, with that, we are now adjourned.